Well, we're going to the mountains and then Brayson's got to.
Mr. Wall, you're off with the mountain?
Yeah, we have conference this Monday.
My basketball team.
Good, it's gonna be really good. We were in Virginia Beach last week.
Time to wait, mate. It's been time to wait.
Plus four big towns.
How many county's kids was like this?
I don't know about big town. We already had one decided. National Signing Day, we had three, two nice backyards and one basket.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's November twenty first, two thousand twenty-three city council meeting. I would like to ask that you please silence all electronic devices. At this time, we're gonna have our invocation. If you would, please pray with me. Father, thank you for the opportunity to gather this evening for the purpose of conducting the business of our city. Tonight, Lord, we're mindful that this is the week of Thanksgiving, and on Thursday, many of our friends and family will gather as we set aside time to recognize the things that we are so very thankful for. This evening, we ask that you help us keep things in perspective. For many times, the very things that we should be thankful for, we often take for granted. Throughout the world, there's much unrest and uncertainty, and tonight, we're very thankful that we can gather in peace. Locally, there are many that are struggling with issues such as homelessness, or drug addiction, or mental health issues, and many other tenuous situations. May we be thankful for your goodness and mercy, and may we seek ways to assist those that need a helping hand. May you please touch our hearts this week of Thanksgiving to give back and share our good fortune to those that are less fortunate. We're thankful for our blessings and the positive things we are experiencing within our city. We have positive growth and accomplishments. They're evident every day. However, we do have challenges. Please give us the wisdom and the knowledge from above as we face these challenges with confidence that there is a path of resolution, no matter how big or how complicated the issue may seem. Bless our staff, our first responders. Father, bless this council and those that have assisted with our work plan this evening. We're thankful for everything you've provided, and may our business this evening be in the best interest of all involved. In your name we pray. Amen. Our next item on the agenda is proclamation for Small Business Saturday, which is this coming Saturday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. At this time, we'll recognize Burlington Downtown Corporation Manager Erin Nettles. Is Erin with us? Oh, there she is. Come on up and tell us about Small Business Saturday.
Small Business Saturday is used throughout the country. Lots of different groups recognize it. We want to bring attention to those that are small businesses throughout the economy, which represent most of the businesses within the economy. We like to especially bring attention to downtown, which is why we're having our Tree Lighting Festival at that time, to try to bring people downtown and create some excitement and really show off what we've done with downtown with bringing in some new businesses and restaurants. So we invite you all to attend to Small Business Saturday. On this Saturday from four until six P. M., you can shop all day long in the shops, eat in the restaurants. For every twenty-five dollars you spend, you get entered into a drawing for downtown dollars. The downtown dollars can be used, they're essentially like gift cards to the businesses downtown. It's just another way we incentivize using our businesses and restaurants in downtown. So, thank you.
Good. Let's read the proclamation. The City of Burlington, North Carolina proclamation recognizing Small Business Saturday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas the City of Burlington, North Carolina celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty-three point one million small businesses in the United States, which represent ninety-nine point nine percent of all firms with paid employees in the United States. And whereas, small businesses are responsible for sixty-two point seven percent of net new jobs created since nineteen ninety-five, currently employing forty-six point four percent of those working in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, in two thousand twenty-two, Small Business Saturday drove an estimated seventeen point nine billion dollars in small business sales, with seventy-two percent of shoppers strongly agreeing that they would continue to shop small throughout the holiday season because of the positive social, economic, and environmental impact it has on their local community. And whereas, seventy-two percent of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday reported the day makes them want to shop or eat at small independently owned businesses all year long, not just during the holiday season. And whereas, sixty-eight cent of every dollar spent at a small business in the U. S. status in the local economy, and that every dollar spent at a small business creates an additional forty-eight cent in local business activity because of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas Burlington, North Carolina supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving, a Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I'm Mayor Jim Butler and the Burlington City Council hereby proclaim Saturday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, a Small Business Saturday in the City of Burlington, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. This the twenty-first day of November, two thousand twenty-three. So, let's go. The next item on the agenda is a report to the city council concerning the Lumos construction update. I think at this time, we'll recognize Todd Lambert and Lumos Market Director Andrew Stevenson.
Hey, thank you, Mayor, Council. We just wanted to give you a quick update on Lumos' progress. So I'll give you a quick update from the engineering office. So to date, engineering has issued seventy-four individual permits to Lumos for construction. Each individual permit covers roughly usually between fifteen hundred and two thousand feet of fiber installed. So to date, that's a lot of permits that we've been issuing to Lumos, and they are actively working. I want to introduce Andrew Stevenson. He is Lumos Director of Market Development. He's gonna give you a brief update on their progress, their rollout, and their construction activities.
Welcome, Andrew.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, appreciate it. As Todd indicated, my name is Andrew Stevenson, Director of Market Development. I'm based at our offices in High Point, North Carolina. That's where I've grown up, so of course, I'm quite familiar with the Piedmont and Burlington and Alamance County, so it's nice to be here this evening. And so just wanted to give again an update. We know that our construction is actively underway in the city and around the county, so just wanted to provide an update. And would certainly welcome the opportunity to come back and provide subsequent updates, because this process will be planned out over the next several months into next year and likely into probably twenty twenty-five as well. So just wanted to kind of take a step back and look at our project as a whole, and then, of course, we'll hone in on the impact as it relates to the city. And so we announced this project that impacts parts of eastern Guilford County and into Alamance County in February of two thousand twenty-two. In total, the shaded areas that you see here represent about seven hundred miles of fiber optic internet that we'll be installing and have already installed in quite a few places. In total, it should impact around thirty-nine thousand homes and businesses. So that's something we're quite proud of. And again, it's a project of a large scope that'll take a couple of years or more to complete. You know, of course, you can see it from the map here that we're gonna be impacting Witsit, Gibsonville, Burlington, Elon Hall River, Graham, Green Level, and Meadow. And of course, we're also working into Orange County as well, actively underway there. And so one of the focuses of our company is to reach areas that don't have fiber optic internet today. So basically, those are gonna be places that primarily are gonna have options through their cable company or through the local telephone company. And so the reason you kind of see the splotchy nature of our map is that we are primarily, not exclusively, but primarily targeting areas that do not have a current fiber optic internet option today. It is the latest technology to deliver, and what we do is we deliver fiber all the way to the premise, whether it's the home or the small business. We do not serve large enterprise-type business customers that you would think some of the larger telcos are customarily providing, like hospital systems, school systems, and things of that nature. So appropriately, being small business this weekend coming up, recognition, we just want to, of course, just point out that we do like to serve our small businesses as well. So just kind of moving on here, just to kind of zone in a little bit more on the impact that you can see here in the City of Burlington. Again, the shaded areas represent the areas that we do plan to install our fiber. In total, within the city, we should be installing about two hundred miles in total of fiber optic internet. That'll impact around twelve thousand addresses, and that's gonna be between residential and primarily residential and some small businesses in there as well. And so just to kind of give you an update as to kind of the progress to date, I've kind of put a little legend over there on the left, that you can kind of see the areas that we have already made services available or highlighted in yellow and red. The fiber has been constructed, so the fiber and the conduit. Conduit is the plastic tubing that encases the fiber optic. It protects it from the elements, because we typically do bury these facilities underground. Sometimes we do aerial attachments to telephone poles, but primarily, this is gonna be underground construction. So the areas in shaded in red are areas where the excavation work, the installation of the conduit and the fiber had been completed. However, services are not available yet because it's pending either the completion of the what we call feeder fiber, or the backbone, if you will, or the installation of a cabinet. A cabinet you may see typically at a major intersection. It holds the electronics that power the fiber optic and make the services actually work. So that's kind of, those are key elements, obviously, to making the services available. But in a way, the areas that are shaded in red, the hard work of installing the fiber and the conduit has been completed. So it's really just waiting on a couple of different elements, the feeder fiber or the cabinet, to be able to make the services available to those individuals. The area shaded in green are the areas that we expect to have construction completed by the end of this year. So between this, of course, the rest of this month and in December. And then the area shaded in teal are the ones that we anticipate can be completed sometime in the next ninety days or so, January to February. So in total, so I should indicate, I should point out that the areas that have service available today, it's about two hundred, excuse me, two thousand addresses. The area shaded in red is about thirty-two hundred homes and businesses. And then by year end, we have the area shaded in green, another eleven hundred addresses. And by the teal areas, the areas that we should complete by January or February, about sixteen hundred in total. So we're making pretty good improvements, and obviously, it's a process of, just the labor of installing it has to go through the permitting process, which I'll get into in a little bit in a few additional slides. But we do anticipate, just backing up a little bit as far as the project within the city limits of Burlington. Of course, we're building in other areas, but speaking right now to the areas within the city limits of Burlington, the majority of the construction should be completed by the end of two thousand twenty-four. There could be a few areas that are a little bit closer down towards Graham that may carry over into the first quarter of two thousand twenty-five. But again, the bulk of this should be completed within the next twelve to thirteen months or so. One additional thing to point out is multi-dwelling units, we're talking about apartment complexes and things of that nature. We have to procure permission from the property owner to be able to install our facilities into those areas. So what we're looking at here is primarily gonna be single-family homes and, of course, small businesses. So we are actively pursuing agreements with multi-dwelling units to be able to install our facilities and make the services available to the folks that live there as well. So again, I'll just run through these slides fairly quickly. These are just, again, just a more zoomed-in view of the different areas. And I'd be glad, of course, to make these slides available, or again, just to do a live demonstration. We use Google Earth. We could really zone in on any areas if you wanted to meet at a later date, to kind of look at any detailed areas. But again, these are the areas in town where fiber services are now available. These are the areas that I highlighted earlier in green, where the fiber construction has been completed, but the services have not been made available yet because it's pending a feeder fiber or the installation of the electronics cabinet. These are the areas where we expect construction to be completed within the next, say, thirty to forty-five days by the end of the year. Last, these are the areas we expect to be completed between January and February of next year. So all that to kind of say, you know, kind of slide into, you know, just wanted to give a quick update. But of course, I know one of the topics of interest were what are the rules kind of governing our activities, our construction activities in the city? And of course, it really starts with, of course, the city's Public Rights of Way Management Ordinance. It's in the city code, and then also our franchise agreement with the city, which, of course, references and incorporates by reference the city's Public Rights of Way Management Ordinance. And that really spells out all the conditions that we have to follow, all the terms and conditions have already been agreed upon on the front end. Then, of course, once, of course, that's all behind us now. And of course, we're operating under the terms and conditions of both the city's ordinance and our franchise agreement. But before we do any excavation in the city, as Todd indicated, we have to go through the permitting approval process. And I don't directly work in the permitting process for our company, but we have other teams that do, and they do commend Todd on the work. As he indicated, it is a lot of work, a lot of permits that we've dumped on his desk, and his staff have been able to help us with, again. But that kind of, again, that dictates, you know, where exactly we were able to install our facilities, the fiber, the various junction boxes that go into the ground that allow us to actually serve the residents in town and the business owners in town. And so between all of those things, they really spell out sort of the different requirements, such as, you know, of course, we're required to maintain commercial liability insurance. We have to maintain a performance bond, a fifty thousand dollar performance bond with the city. We have to comply with the North Carolina Underground Damage Prevention Act, the call before you dig, you know, law that you see, the NC eight-one-one. That's really important as well, the locating of underground facilities. So of course, once we get an area permit, as we can, of course, we're now, we have the green light from the city to be able to go in and do the digging, we still have to pick up the phone and call NC eight-one-one, which again, as the process is all centralized at the state level, to be able to require other utility providers, existing utility providers in the area to come out and locate, or they typically use third parties like USIC to locate their facilities in the ground. Of course, that's water, sewer, in the case of the city, or if it's other electric or telecom, and gas as well. And then, of course, in addition, going back to the city's Public Rights of Way Management Ordinance and our franchise agreement, as an approved permit holder, we have a duty to restore streets in any public areas that have been disturbed. That holds true in residential areas as well. So of course, that would involve, you know, of course, the excavation and the easement in the public right of way in someone's yard, sometimes in a driveway. A lot of times, we have to do what's called potholing, and that's just a kind of a belts and suspenders type of approach, just to make sure that we're identifying where any existing facilities are. Of course, gas is the most important, just given the inherent dangers around working around gas lines and things of that nature. So again, there's measures that we do take, our construction teams. One of my colleagues, Anthony Tussi, is with us tonight. He's our Senior Manager of Construction for North Carolina, so his crews are the ones that are actually doing this work. We also have a duty as a permit holder to warn the public. So that's what I'll get into in just a moment on the next slides, and that's one of the ways we try to touch the impacted areas before we come in and start essentially disrupting, you know, their areas. We know it's an inherently disruptive process with excavation and things of that nature. And so we just want to make sure that we're notifying folks in different ways that, you know, they can be aware on the front end before we come in and do any type of activities. So these are just a few examples of ways that we like to notify folks. The little yard darts that you'll see. The sign in the middle is something that after someone subscribes to our service, you would typically see if they would agree to put that out in their yard. And then the installation A-frame signs we like to keep in the areas that we're working as well. And all of these items here, of course, have our contact information. The one A-frame sign has a QR code, someone can just go up to it and scan it, take you right to our website with all of our contact information. These are a few other ways. This, on the right, if you look, the two items there, that's a pre-construction letter. This is something that we've just newly started to do. Once a neighborhood goes into the permitting process, we've begun to mail out this pre-notification letter. The envelope that it goes in, so it looks like a direct mail piece, it is a direct mail piece, but we try to, and a lot of times, we all do it, we just get junk mail with though it right in the trash can. But we try to, you know, avoid that issue by just indicating on the envelope there in the top left, construction notice. So we hope that does reach more folks in that way. It contains, again, just kind of some high-level, you know, things of what's gonna be happening, the locating of utility lines. You might see flags or paint on the ground that indicate underground utilities. Of course, the work in the easement in the right of way. And then lastly, most importantly, the restoration work that will take place once the crew finishes the neighborhood. They come back around, they may have to do a temporary restoration. They may have to fill, if they have to do a pothole in a driveway, they may fill it with gravel temporarily, but they will come back around and fill it with concrete, you know, of course, match it up and make sure it matches the existing concrete on the driveway. And this is just a snapshot from that pre-construction letter. Actually, let me go back real quick. The bottom left I didn't mention is a door hanger, so that's another method that we do to try to reach folks as well. And again, these things, the door hangers, we try to get out at least a week or so before we start doing any digging in a neighborhood. And again, the pre-construction letter should go out a little earlier than that, because it is, once it goes through, once it hits that permitting process. So again, this is just a closer-up view of what you would see in that pre-construction letter. You'll see contractors in action, you'll see the utility line marking, the work in the public right of way, and then, of course, the restoration work. But one of the things that I like is the frequently asked questions section, and this information is all available on our website as well, which I will share with you at the end. But one of the questions is, don't you need my permission to be on my property? Of course, that's a common complaint, or question, I should say. And so we just want to make sure that folks know that what we're doing is all permitted, whether it be by the city or we're on a state-maintained road with the Department of Transportation. So all the work we're doing has to be on the back end of an approved permit. And so, again, in closing, just wanted to provide some of our contact information, and this is something that, again, is available, all of the items that we do send out, the door hangers, the pre-construction letter, the yard darts, the signage, and things of that nature. So we just want to make sure that folks can reach us, because we know there's gonna be questions, and in some cases, there's gonna be complaints. We know that. So what we like to do is just make ourselves available. In my role as Director of Market Development, it's local government relations. I know we have an extra special relationship with the City of Burlington, you know, through the relationship we have with the city at Fairchild Park, we've located our Point of Presence building there. And then I know that we also have a relationship with the city through the Trigig Initiative and the different things that we're doing to help with the city's internal services and so forth. So Scott Bevler on those items, again, he's been a great help with all of that. So again, just being available to local officials. We know that you get questions from neighbors and your constituents. And then, of course, we want to, again, try to do our best to reach the residents themselves to make that good first impression. We don't want the first impression to be someone digging in their yard and they have no clue why we're there, what we're doing. And so that's what we're trying to avoid.
Is the priority here to try to extend this service to where there is limited services? Is that correct?
Yeah, limited services. So certainly, you're gonna find some areas where what we consider underserved is in any area that lacks. There's different definitions of unserved and underserved, it just depends on what program or what person you're talking to. And so, yes, we're trying to go to areas that lack a fiber optic internet option today. If you have cable available to you, then that's a pretty good option. You're not considered unserved by the definitions that the FCC of the State of North Carolina, the State Broadband Office, use. the State Broadband Office use to identify what are the areas that most need. If you're served by just DSL internet, likely you're considered unserved because the, the, maximum speeds that a copper telephone DSL line can provide for internet service don't meet the minimum definitions of broadband internet. And so we're trying to go to those areas. In fact, we were able to win a grant from the State Broadband Office to get some of the unserved areas in the southern part of the state and a little area, a little west of, northwest of Meven as well. So about 750 unserved. So those are the areas most in need. So again, that was something that's going to be subsidized in part with a state grant from the state of North Carolina.
From a staff perspective, have we had many complaints or folks calling, wanting to know what's going on?
We have. And we've kind of turned them over to engineering as well and Todd's been in contact.
Um, yeah, so a lot of times the, and we get various types of complaints. It could be some, someone who didn't know this was coming through for whatever reason and then they want to know what's going on. We get complaints, the typical question about wired in by yard. And so that varies greatly of giving an understanding to the difference between where the right-of-way is and where the true property line starts. A lot of residents, you know, they, they mow in the right-of-way, so they feel that that's their yard. And then we get complaints about, I have a sinkhole in, in where the pothole and it's sucking in a little bit. And so they reach out to us, we reach out to LUMOS, they, they kind of rectify the situation. Do, do we get complaints? Yes. Again, over 74 permits ranging usually about 2,000 feet apiece. So you're talking 100, 150,000 feet of fiber that's been installed. It's not a huge number percentage-wise, but, but like any construction project, we, we get questions and complaints.
So I think the biggest, I've gotten a lot of calls. I don't know about council. I'm, I probably as many as you have. I think the biggest shock to a homeowner is how far the right-of-way encroaches into their yard. Typically from a, from a normal street with a sidewalk, how much into a homeowner's yard is it typically going to encroach from sidewalk?
So on a, on a local subdivision street, it's usually going to be about 10 feet. If you're on something that was more of a thoroughfare or even something that was older, we have some city streets that are, it's not atypical for it to be at a 60-foot right-of-way or even a 70-foot right-of-way. And so you put a 30-foot road in a 70-foot right-of-way and there, there's an awful lot of right-of-way left over. So a lot of times that's, that's the question that, that homeowners just don't exactly know where that line is. And I think sometimes they're, they may be caught by surprise that, I thought you were going to be in the right-of-way, but you're, you're 15 feet off the pavement. Well, you're still in the right-of-way. So it, sometimes I mean, that's the, the shock of what, what that line actually looks like on the ground.
Is that from the pavement or from the curb in Gutter Area?
So the right-of-way is typically with the, with the assumption that the road was built in the center of the road. So if it is a 60-foot right-of-way, typically you will, in a residential street will be somewhere about 30 feet wide. So that's going to give you 15 feet from the edge of pavement to the actual right-of-way on both sides. But again, if, if you've got a curb line and you're 15 feet behind it, that, that starts to feel like your yard. And rightfully so, that, that's the questions we get a lot of the time.
So can I expect you guys to come by and mow for me as?
Maybe not flag it that it hasn't been mowed.
Yeah, yeah. So again, that's, that's where the locations and the construction sequence, a lot of times just people aren't familiar with, with what the construction process is. So certainly LUMOS can, can elaborate on it, but even if it's what's considered a bore, so it's considered trenchless, they're not digging all the way through their yard. But the process may be that even though I'm boring through your yard and I've got a bore pit on, on that's, you know, 1,000 feet away and the machine is pushing the line through the ground, LUMOS is required by utility commissions digging law, they have to locate where they're crossing other utilities. So you have a gas line that may be in the pavement, but it has a service that goes to each house. And so the gas line will be painted and, and they can give an approximate depth on how deep that gas line is, but they're required to pothole that gas line and see, okay, it's, it's 24 inches deep. So when I run in my machine, I know where I need to be to miss it. So there is still digging going on within the right-of-way, even if it's a, a bored installation.
Right.
And, and so that's, sometimes that's the question we get. I thought they were, you know, I didn't know they were going to be digging in my yard. Well, they're, they're not really digging all the way through your yard, but they are going to be digging those potholes through your yard to figure out where your gas service is, where your water service is, sewer service, power, cable. So you may have five, five services that are running from the right-of-way through your yard that they're for each house and it's just a process.
And then put, put this back to normal, normal standards?
Yes, yeah. They're required both from the city and even at the state level to restore it in the same condition that they, they found it.
Well, you're getting ready to do mine tomorrow, so I'll let you know how good you do. I think they've been, I know they've.
They stopped at mine.
You have, you have, you, you must have some favor to.
Well, I didn't have any favor because what I don't understand is in our community, AT&amp;T's already been through. And so why would you come over top of it? I, I don't get that.
Is, is AT&amp;T offering fiber services?
Yes, yes, two years ago.
So typically, and again, as I mentioned, we're, we're not exclusively targeting areas that don't have a current fiber option. That's our primary approach, just to, you know, from a business case standpoint and a return on investment, we get higher penetration rates in areas that don't have a fiber provider. However, if we're going past your neighborhood to get to a, another neighborhood or additional neighborhoods that don't have fiber, it, it's good economics for us just to go ahead and serve your neighborhood and compete with AT&amp;T's.
Good question. People have complaints or questions. What's the best number? Your number?
Yep. The fastest way to get when it's a construction related, if it's a question of, of the nature of, am I in the project or am I not in the project or a timeline type of question, please, I would ask you to direct those to me. If it's construction related, those can come to me as well, but for fastest, because there's multiple eyeballs on this fiber construction at lumosfiber.com email address.
I guess more, you know, particularly a complaint, would that come to you?
It could, yes, it absolutely can. You can send those to me. If you're getting those, please, if you're getting those from your constituents or neighbors or friends, send them to me.
I've had several. I have a number, so.
Yeah.
Bottom line is, is I've got 336-821-8801. Okay, I'm good.
Can we have that on city website anywhere that we could direct somebody to with all the contact?
We can certainly update it. I mean, typically, typically we have, so the way engineering works, we're, we're the permitting office. We have an inspector, a right-of-way inspector that is looking at not only LUMOS's installations, but Duke installation, AT&amp;T installation, all of the installations. So John, John Brings from job to job all day long. He is, you know, we have many jobs going on, not just with LUMOS. And a lot of times he, he's the best contact for us. So if we get a plane in engineering office, we're, we're more than happy to, to put them in touch with John, with John in the field. You can ride over there and speak with them, you know, in their yard and find out exactly what the problem is. And then he knows to speak with LUMOS to call. But we can certainly update our webpage with, with LUMOS information as well.
I think it would help us to be able to, if we're going to be doing this for another 12, 13, 14 months, to be able to have a centralized place that we can encourage people to go to. And they, some people may prefer to send an email, some may want to call. We know who to tell them to call, City Hall if we need to.
Right.
But I think that would be a good idea.
What's John's number?
Bob has some more complaints than I have, obviously.
I've had a few.
John's number is 336-512-7646.
Everybody knows that now.
7646?
7646.
I'm not calling John.
But, but, but again, I mean, we, we don't mind fielding complaints because, I mean, we're the office handling it. And, and John doesn't mind fielding complaints because he's in the field every day. He, he certainly is available. He likes to go by and talk to people because a lot of times seeing it on the ground and what they're complaining about is, is much better than somebody being in an office and trying to interpret what the, what the resident is upset about. And so John's number is a good contact for anybody in the city because again, that's going to be the person from the city that shows up, talks to you and helps resolve the problems.
What's, what's his last name, Todd?
John Hammond. Hammond, H.J.M.M.O.N.D.
Okay.
What's, what's the philosophy if there's already service in that area?
He just sort of.
So there's no common, I mean, so it can be multiple services, right?
Multiple internet providers?
Yes. So my question is, I mean, just from, just from just past experience, the difficulties of, of recognizing exactly where you don't come to interfere or cut someone else's line or service, if you're in a, in a, in a, in a right-of-way itself, is that, is that, how is that handled?
Yes, that's also handled through the, the, the Call Before You Dig locating service as well. So they're marking existing communications facilities, electric, gas.
So they're going in, marking all the systems, all the services in ground, in the ground now, before you come in and start trenching.
That's right. The one thing that, that of course, the, the NCA 111 service would not mark would be private facilities. So you're thinking of water, you know, sprinkler systems or, you know, fenceless docks that, you know, pet control, that kind of thing. So that is one thing that we would not mark. But, you know, again, through the advanced certification process, we'd want to, of course, you know, encourage folks to do that themselves.
That was one of the concerns they had a call about, was irrigation system. How would you install irrigation system in terms of how far off the right-of-way, how far off the curb?
Yeah, and, and, and we've dealt with that, not just with LUMOS, but it needed, especially with Spectrum and AT&amp;T over the years. Most people are coming to the city to get a permit from engineering for an encroachment to put their sprinkler system in. And rightly so, most people are calling the sprinkler system, even if they know where the right-of-way is, you typically aren't going to stop your sprinklers at the right-of-way and then have nine feet of, nine to 10 feet of grass that, that's dead while the rest of it looks great. So there are lots, there are probably lots of sprinkler systems that encroach into the right-of-way. It's not something we're actively looking at, it's not something we're trying to go out and enforce, but when, when a utility comes through and they get a permit, rightfully so, to be in the right-of-way and they hit those, then we're working with the homeowner and the installer to restore those, move those if they need to move those. But those are the situations between, like I said, electric, electric underground buried fences and sprinkler systems are the two biggest that, that are never going to be marked. You always get some cases where something's marked and it was marked incorrectly and it gets hit, it gets some states that were missed and it wasn't marked and it still gets hit. And that, that, that happens whether it's LUMOS, it's AT&amp;T, or it's the city doing work. I mean, I know when, when we did our signal system stuff downtown, we, we were as guilty as anybody else for hitting stuff that you didn't know was there. So it's not unheard of, it's not something, you want to avoid it as much as possible, but it, it does happen.
But it appears that the, you guys are doing a really good job of cleaning up and putting back, in our neighborhood especially, it, it looks good.
Yeah, that, that's important to us because again, that's all about making that good first impression. You know, a lot of folks have never heard of us, our company before, so again, just about making that good impression.
I mean, one of the complaints I got was, I think it must have been irrigation system hit. You know, the lines were taken to, to the edge of the curb. Sprinkler heads replaced at the edge of the curb, just so you could cover the grass along the dirt itself. So I'm not sure if I'm clicking on a right-of-way, is there be, you know, in their yard coming back? But if that's, if that indeed happens, whose responsibility is it then?
Well, typically when, when the city finds out it happens and John, our right-of-way inspector, is going to look to LUMOS and say, fix it. And, and most of the time it's, it's a fairly easy quit because most sprinkler systems are plasticized. So your worst thing you're doing is you're making sure it gets cut off and then you're splicing the pipe back together with a coupler and you move on and fix it. So it's certainly not an expensive fix, like if you cut a fiber optic line and you've got to get a special crew out there to splice that back together. But city's going to look to LUMOS and say, where it should have been here, where you knew it was here, it was still here, you hit it, you fix it.
Is LUMOS, I'm sorry.
So that, that, that number was given to Bob, if that indeed happens, that's like, that's what I call starts that and that initiates that action.
That's right.
Of trying to correct the issue.
Yep.
LUMOS, do you have subcontractors doing the digging?
Yes, we'll have a prime contractor and then they, they potentially could sub out to, to other crews as well.
That's what happened to me. My sprinkler head got hit too, but I had AT&amp;T and they had a subcontractor that was doing the digging and so forth. It took me a month to get it back.
Yeah, and that's again, we, we know that, and again, it's just about being available, making ourselves available and knowing how to get in touch with this quickly. You know, unfortunately those things are going to happen.
Yeah.
Minimize it, but we want to be available when it does and we can take care of it as quickly as we can.
Well, it, it is maybe short-term pain for long-term gain, I hope, because there were, getting back to the original grant, there was a lot of homes that were unserved that are now served.
Yep.
It's also competition.
Yeah, well. Yeah, that, that does matter too. So that's another number up there if you want their sales number, if anybody needs that. But any other questions?
I heard what I need to. And Todd said that John likes talking to people.
Yes, he, he.
He'll get some calls.
He enjoys his job. So he really does take, take pride in, in meeting with people and making sure that they're happy when he gets done.
I will say, I will say I was having dinner with some, some staff from another municipality that LUMOS had been operating in, and they said, I will tell you this, they answered the phone when you called, if there's a problem. So thank you for that. Let's just continue to look after our folks when, when that does happen and we'll get through it.
And I, I've got a copy of this slide, the presentation that we, it's kind of late so we couldn't get your copies, but we'll make sure.
Bobby, Bob probably needs a hard copy.
We will get some, get to, you just, y'all can have that as well too.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, appreciate you.
Put the gentleman back in the back and have a question.
Could I get your street, please, for LUMOS, for LUMOS, for North Carolina?
Okay.
If you sit there, it'll be working on your street. I want to make sure that the right crew is out there.
It'll be fine. But I did notice they are on our street and all the flags are in. So I was like, well, they're getting ready to dig here. So then they just started, but I'm sure you guys will handle it fine. Next item on our agenda is Code of Ethics, disclosing any conflicts of interest. At this time, we'll recognize our city clerk, Beverly Smith.
Mayors and Councilors, my responsibility is to remind you of the use of which conflicts of interest. I assume there are any legitimate conflicts concerning the high court?
None. Thank you. Next item is the Approval of Minutes, October 17th, 2023, City Council Meeting and November 7th, 2023, City Council Meeting. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the minutes. Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is a request for additions to the consent agenda. These additions are Item F, Wrightfield Entertainment Venue Naming Rights Proposal, Item G, to set a date of public hearing, Resolution Authorizing Exchange of Real Property, Item H, to set a date of public hearing for the North Carolina Building Reuse Grant and Incentives for Matthews International, Item I, lease agreement with the Aliments Community item I, lease agreement with the Alamance Community College for Live Fire Training Building, item J, resolution opting out of the 3M and DuPont Class Action Settlements. Is item I still on the agenda, David?
My understanding, which we're going to put that on for these things, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Oh, so from, so from the additions to the consent agenda, please strike item I and it will come at a future date?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so at this time, we'll entertain a motion to add items F, G, H, and J to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item H, temporarily closed, two parking spaces and the sidewalk in front of 342 Worth Antique Shop located at 342 Worth Street in downtown Burlington on Wednesday, November 29th, 2023, from 5:00 a.m. until 11:59 p.m. to allow a film production company to place two vintage cars in the parking spaces for time-period appropriate film scene footage. Item B, to approve a notice of intent to adopt a resolution amending the existing lease of property located at the Joe Davidson Park Tower located at 3715A Royal Retreat Road to New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for the purpose of providing cellular and wireless internet service at the January 2nd, 2024 city council meeting. Item C, to approve budget amendment 2024-12 for the police department to allocate funds received from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, or JAG. Item D, to approve budget amendment 2024-14 and authorize the city manager to execute a contract between the city of Burlington and Weathers Ravenel for the development of an ADA Assessment and Transition Plan project. Item E, to approve budget amendment 2024-15 for the police department to allocate funds awarded by the U.S. Department of Justice for the FY 2023-2026 Body-Worn Camera Policy and Implementation Program Grant. Item F, to approve a proposal from the Burlington Sock Puppets to name the Wrightfield Entertainment Venue Terrace, the Burlington Industries Bullpen. Item G, to set a date of public hearing for December 5th, 2023 pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A-271 to adopt a resolution authorizing the exchange of certain city-owned real property for certain real property owned, real property owned by Laboratory Corporation of America, Burlington, North Carolina. Item H, to set a date of public hearing for December 5th, 2023 pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-71C to consider adopting a resolution to support an application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Program on behalf of the Matthews International and consideration granting a local incentive award for an expansion project at property located at 2056 Willow Springs Lane, Burlington. Item J, to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager and/or outside counsel, F. Paul Calamita, to execute and file an opt-out notice on behalf of the city of Burlington opting out of the 3M and DuPont Class Action Settlements. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
The move.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. At this time, we'll move into our public hearings. We have three public hearings this evening. If you have interest in the public hearings, you're, you'll have time when each section comes available or each item becomes available. We'll start with item one. A public hearing has been continued to consider a request to rezone property from Office Institutional, OI, and General Business, GB, to General Business Limited Use, or GBLU. The property is 3.5 acres in size and is located west from the intersection of Collingwood Drive and South Church Street, on the south side of South Church Street, addressed as 3216 and 3234 South Church Street, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Numbers 112708 and 112582. Just as a reminder, this item is continued from the November 7th, 2023 city council meeting. At this time, we'll recognize our planning director, Jamie Lawson. Welcome, Jamie.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. So as you recall, this item was originally in front of you on November 7th. However, the matter has been carried to tonight for a public hearing. Just as Mayor mentioned, I'll pull up the zoning map. So this area that's highlighted in the teal shade is requested to be rezoned from ONI to General Business Limited Use. There are a total of, I think it's 31 now, recommended uses that are proposed by the applicant. I'm going to just pull up quickly, this is a comparison in terms of the existing uses in the ONI zoning district and then the proposed, this should say GB here.
Can you enlarge that, please?
Yes, sir. Is that better? Okay. And the highlighted areas really where the changes are. Everything that's not highlighted is consistent between the existing zoning district and the proposed zoning district. Under the commercial use classification, the uses that are highlighted in yellow are the additional adds from, from the applicant's request. They are not permitted under the current zoning district. You will note here that I have crossed out microbrewery and micro distillery. The applicant has added that as a use that they are no longer pursuing as part of this limited use request. So there's, those are the four additional uses that would be added if this zoning was approved. And then just kind of in summary, the main differences between, besides the additional uses, the main differences between the existing zoning and the proposed, there's a, there would be an increase in the density for multifamily development. There would be an elimination of single-family detached and attached residential units that are currently allowed. The buffer on the southern side of the property specifically would increase if you were changing the zoning from general business where you're budding medium-density residential. It would be a required type D, which is a 40-foot perimeter buffer. And as I mentioned, there's an elimination of a number of uses that are currently allowed in the office and institutional district, as well as a number of uses that are currently allowed under general business. And these are the four additional uses, again, just highlighted that the applicant is requesting. So I'll just go back, unless you'd like me to go back to one of the slides?
Does anybody need to see the slides?
So as you recall, this item did go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They did recommend it unanimously with that request to have the microbrewery and micro distillery eliminated. Staff is recommending approval with consistency statement sheet option two included in your packet. And the applicant, as well as Amanda Hoden is in the audience, in case you have any questions for her. And I'm available for any questions that you might have for me.
So just in, in summary, just so I'm clear, based on what you put up there, based on current zoning, there could be 12 units per acre in multifamily. The request would be just to double that?
Yes.
In essence? And if we go the GBOU route as requested, the buffer would be enhanced to the south side? Is that right?
That's right.
So we would be receiving an enhanced buffer system and under ONI and general business, what's allowable now, the number of uses has been reduced?
The number of uses has been reduced in both of the zoning districts. If you were to keep the existing zoning that's there now, you would just be adding four additional uses.
Gotcha.
That, that are currently allowed in office and institutional.
So you're really not adding?
Yes, you are, you are adding because under the current office and institutional, those four uses are not permitted.
The ones you highlight.
Correct.
Yeah, those are additions.
Can we see that one more time?
Sure. So it's, it's not an add in terms of a number per se, it's an add in terms of the, the use.
The type of use.
So I'll, I'll go back to this. This is the residential. So really, you're not changing anything here except for the density.
Right.
As well as 1310. And then the commercial uses, you're adding those that are highlighted in yellow.
Jamie, this is inappropriate, but I got to ask you a question. How did animal grooming in veterinary clinic becomes not included in?
Existing.
Existing uses. What, what made those two different than restaurant, I mean, all kinds of things there? I mean, animal grooming shop and a veterinary clinic, what may those not fit the bill?
In terms of being not allowed in office and institutional versus general business, that, that's the main difference. So under the office and institutional zoning district, those uses are currently not allowed. When you change the zoning to general business, you have, you know, different use categories and.
I got you. Any other questions for Jamie? Anybody have any questions for the?
Petitioner here?
Yep.
Yes.
You got a question?
Well, I mean, she's here last time. Any comments?
Say a few words?
Oh, thank you.
Yep, sure. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. While she's doing that, name and address for the record, Amanda Hoden, 804 Green Valley Road, Suite 200 in Greens Road. And I'm here, of course, as a technical matter for the current property owner, which is SJ Awalala LLC. They've got the property on the market for sale. So largely, I'm here on behalf of that contract purchaser who's put the property under contract to purchase it. That entity is Geiger Property. They're out of Syracuse. They do projects. They're tried and true developers. They do projects all over. Just anecdotally, have come to fall in love with your town because they have kids who go to college down here. So sort of looking at this as a way to professionally transition maybe to, to follow their kids down south. And here's why, because they're not with me tonight because they're expecting a huge snow event tomorrow. And they do not want to risk missing Thanksgiving with their families. So their apologies are sent for not being here tonight. But they have been with me every other night. So Ms. Lawson gave a very thorough presentation, so I don't think I have to go over too much. She really captured one of the major themes here, which is that we believe that this is a very small request in terms of what's actually expanded here, in terms of the additional four uses that we've been over. And I think Councilman Owen, you captured the fact that two of them, really you would have thought would been in ONI, a veterinary clinic and animal grooming certainly seem very commiserate with the doctor's office or things of that nature. So I want to talk about those, a couple of expansions, the opportunity for the increased residential, and just why this makes sense for your land use pattern. So here, here we are. This, of course, you know this, this is the aerial image, but zoning and land use is always about location, right? So what we've got here that's very compelling, this is Church Street, it's South Church Street here, one of your main corridors. And you've got commercial intensity at either end of the purview that we're interested in for this case. You, you see it on the right and left of the screen, the two red dots are the two parcels that are at issue in this case. The other main feature that you see here is all the residential that both backs up to the existing commercial that we've talked about and that exists in this area in between those two commercial nodes. So what you've got there is a, is a transition opportunity. How do we, how do we most appropriately go between those two big commercial activity nodes on a major thoroughfare where you're moving people, where they already are, where we know they're, they're already moving from places they need to be? And your zoning pattern tells us how, how you're looking to do that. They, the zoning pattern has already acknowledged that this corridor really doesn't have much residential opportunity up on the, the face of the street. As, as a busy thoroughfare, not many people want to live on that in a traditional sort of single-family detached setting. So that's why you've had ONI here. And that's why our request is so narrowly tailored and restricted to, to really be commiserate with that ONI land use pattern. And we're just looking for a very small, a very small expansion of that, to be in keeping with this land use pattern and to continue to flesh out this nice transition that you've established. You see the red stars again? I'll note that it is directly adjacent to GB. So we would not be leapfrogging any of the ONI and putting red in the middle of your blue here. We would just be adding a little bit of GB to where we're already, we already have that land use pattern. And, and again, I think that's a reasonable request, a harmonious one because of the restrictions in place. I know you know your corridor, but just coming from west to east, traveling down Church Street, it really is impactful to think about how this feels as you, as you move through the street, what I've just talked about from a bird's eye view. So these are the commercial uses on either side of South Church Street as you travel east, as you continue to do so. If you look at the back of that picture, you see a bright blue sign, that's the Sherwin-Williams. Their driveway is actually on the subject property. And I'll just go back a minute. You see the, the major commercial centers here that have been here a long time. Those are, those are, this is a very well-established goods and services epicenter of Burlington. So here we are, a little closer to the site now. Again, you see that Sherwin-Williams as your orienter and the tree stand just beyond that is the subject property. And so you can really see we are right on the edge of this epicenter of these goods and services and just coming out of that high-intensity zone. So what we need to do is start to step down and start to establish that intermediate zone before we get to that next activity center that we saw on the previous slides. So how do we do that? We are asking for a little expansion here, but we're creating consistency through the use limitations. And Ms. Lawson already did a great job with this, so I'll be quick. The proposed use list, this is 31 remaining uses now. I've also crossed out microbrewery and micro distillery there at the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So this is just 31 remaining uses of the, let's see, I think over 170 that would be allowed if you combined the ONI and the GB. And the actual expanded use list, I, I just learned tonight I was wrong about Upper Story Residential, that is allowed in ONI. So disregard that, and then you see the four uses that you saw with Ms. Lawson. And that's all, that is in play here in terms of what new uses might be allowed. And I would submit to you, we've talked about this, that the veterinary clinic and the animal grooming facility are very commiserate with, with what this quarter already is, with ONI across the street, what that could be. So I, I think those are pretty straightforward, but I do want to do a deep dive into some of this other possibility. Multifamily dwelling, you heard from Ms. Lawson, the expansion here would be to basically double the density that, that could be allowed here if the owner developer decided to do multifamily. Why did we want to keep that? Because it's an ideal location for that sort of thing. A multifamily use is a very traditional tried and true land use, use to step down from those big commercial intensity nodes that we talked about and that we just looked at, because, because single family's not going to go beside that. Offices can, but multifamily can too, because again, you've already got a galvanized group of people. You've got a captive audience that wants those goods and services. So it's good, sound planning to put people where they already need to go. This is a walkable area. When this property develops, it'll have sidewalk in front of it. So again, these are, these people who live here could walk right to the restaurants, the shops, the nursery, the facilities that we saw on those photos that exist in proximate location to this. So that's why it makes sense and we wanted to keep that on the table. So if we look at that doubling of density, what does that really look like? If we just do the math, just straight math, it's a three and a half acre site, that would yield 42 units. Doesn't mean you'd get that because there's a rigorous engineering process, of course, that goes through Ms. Lawson and Mr. Lambert and their cohorts. But just the math, 42 would be your, your maximum. And of course, if you increase that to 24 units an acre, you're looking at 84 units would be the maximum extent that would be permissible, should this new zoning be approved. So I would submit to you that that is still a pretty de minimis increase. An 84-unit multifamily community is, is boutique, it's small. It's not a sprawling campus where you've got several buildings and a clubhouse with parking everywhere. It's, it's a very insular type of project. It's a de minimis traffic generator. I can be corrected by Mr. Lambert perhaps, but I believe that it's, under the ITG trip generation manual, I believe the multiplier is less than a doctor's office for trip generation when you have that few of units. You do get the increased buffer that Ms. Lawson talked about, so, you know, to the extent that this is increased intensity by virtue of the additional units, we pay for that by having bigger buffer requirements so that that's kept appropriate. And, you know, the ability to do just that many more, 84 versus 42, creates a critical mass that really does make a project like this viable. It's, it's expensive to build this stuff and you wanted a project of a certain level where, where folks want to call home and you can really do that much more comfortably and it's feasible at, at 84 units. It's very difficult at 42. So that's, that's why that to us felt reasonable and felt within the realm of possibility here. Convenience store, that's the other use on our list that perhaps feels like an expansion. So no fuel, of course, and, and what we wanted to capitalize here on and why we felt like that might be worth keeping and, and considering is because you saw the slide, with all the residential uses nearby, all the activity that you can imagine on this road. So. So purely convenience, as the name says, you know, not something that would be a blight on the community, but rather an asset to it. This is something in Greensboro, downtown Greensboro, that we sort of modeled it after, and it's very much just a curated shop of sundries. It's got kind of weird and different snacks that you don't find at the Sheetz gas station. It's got a little sandwich shop where you can walk up and have a sandwich made for you. It's got a little, a couple outdoor seating areas, so you can sit down and eat your sandwich. You know, you see cereal here, a wide plethora of drinks. So truly just a pop-in. The items are not special enough or distinct enough to become a destination. So again, we're not looking to, you know, nobody's going to plan their Saturday around coming to this. It's just going to serve the folks who are already here to go to the offices or establishments or live in the units that could be placed here under this zoning. So I just wanted to give you a little context and color as to why we wanted to keep convenience store included and hear your thoughts on that, so that it could be something to just serve the folks who might be on this property anyway. We did do some neighborhood outreach during this process. Back in June, we sent out 23 letters using the city staff's mailing list. We invited everyone to a neighborhood meeting that we held at Summit Worship Center, right across from our site, back on July 13th. And we didn't have anyone attend, which, you know, usually when you have a party, you want people to come, but we hope that no one attended because our request is reasonable and people felt like it was in keeping and it was compatible. I did have one phone call, two emails, which I replied to all of them, told them what I've told y'all here tonight, and they said, okay. We didn't have any opposition or speakers at our Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing. And as you've heard from Ms. Lawson, we did receive unanimous recommendation of approval there with the suggested elimination of a use which we have followed through upon tonight. To my knowledge, no one's reached out to me since that public hearing, and I've not heard from staff that they've had any reach outs either. Ms. Lawson usually does a really good job of sort of referring those people to me so that I can help answer their questions. We've been in touch with our next-door neighbor, First Bank. They're excited about the project. They're formally supporting it and think it'll be an asset to the corridor to go ahead and get a neighbor here and fill out that framework. So with that, I'll be happy to answer questions and hear feedback. Thank you.
Any questions? We're all good?
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we will open the floor for public comments. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on item one regarding public comments? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on item one regarding public comments? Seeing that at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Don't move. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signified by aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. At this time, any other questions for petitioner or for staff? If not, we'll entertain a motion on the item that's been presented before us.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just a little bit concerned on the backside. I'm assuming that is the south side with the neighborhood. So can you speak to that? What is that going to look like?
About the buffering?
The buffer.
Maybe Jamie, too, explain what the difference or the enhancement would actually is in the buffering.
Sure. Let me just pull up the section. So the first difference is the increase in the width of the buffer. A type B buffer is 20 feet, and a type D buffer is 40 feet. And then I had a section open to TIA's in case you had a question about that, so now I've got to go to a different section. But the buffer for type D basically is greater amount of vegetation, additional amount of trees and trubs. It's meant to be more opaque, or less opaque, excuse me, than the type B. I mean, I can give you the specific quantities, but we basically look at the length of the property line and then calculate out, based on the quantities, how much vegetation is needed. Oftentimes, if there's existing vegetation, we do recommend that a site visit is conducted by the city arborist, because if those types of trees or vegetation qualify, we would prefer, you know, to keep existing vegetation.
Jamie, what is the length of this site?
The length of the site? Let's see. I would guess... Just looking at the aerial. One inch equals 250 feet, so I would say it's probably somewhere around 600 feet monthly.
Basically, the limit to football fields.
Would the height of these buildings be different between the difference?
Yes, actually, that's a good point, which I did want to mention. The Office and Institutional zoning district allows greater height than the GB. Office and Institutional is five stories and 50 feet. However, for general business, if you're abutting existing residential development, then you're only allowed to go up to three stories and 36 feet. So there is, there would be a reduction.
So there's a reduction of two stories, yeah?
Yeah, because of the proximity to the homes. There's also, there's also an increase in the open space percentage that would be required when they, when somebody would come in for a site plan. And there is, you know, different setbacks as well.
For GB?
Correct.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we would look for a motion on item one using the orange sheet as the statement of consistency.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the request to rezone properties from Office Institutional OI and General Business GB to General Business Limited Use GBLU. The properties are located west from the intersection of Collinwood Drive and South Church Street on the south side of South Church Street, addressed as 3216 and 3234 South Church Street Avenue, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 112708 and 112582. While the request is inconsistent with future land use plan in Section 4 land use of the Comprehensive Plan, in that it calls for this area to have a suburban residential and traditional residential uses, the request is compatible with the existing commercial residential uses presently in the area. The action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the Comprehensive Plan encourages a sustainable balance of land uses, and the request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signified by aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Jamie, and thank you, Ms. Hoadier, for being here this evening. Moving on to item two. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider a request to rezone property from General Business GB to High Density Residential Limited Use HDRLU. The property is 0.45 acres in size and is located west from the intersection of Witsit Street and Stokes Street on the north side of Stokes Street, addressed as 309 Stokes Street, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 133457. At this time, we'll recognize Jamie again.
Good evening. So this item was also presented to you at the November 7th council meeting. The subject property is currently zoned. General business, you can see here on the existing zoning map, and the request is change the zoning to High Density Residential with a limited use. They're only proposing duplex or single-family detached. This is consistent with the future land use designation for the area. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the request by unanimously six to zero, and staff also recommends the request consistent with option one in your consistency statement sheet. Mr. Sargova is here in the audience, in case you have any questions for him, and I'm available in case you have any questions for me.
Okay. Any comments?
Oh, no, actually, I just, I'm a temporary resident. My intention on the line is just to try to be a family unit or a little bit.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Jamie?
It's just that this was zoned GB.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I think occasionally you bump into those things, and from time to time, you see it, and you just wonder, how did it happen that way? So we'll blame David. Brilliant.
He accepted.
He did. David, you want to shift that to Bob Hardrider, blame him? Okay. Any other comments? This is a public hearing for item number two. The request, at this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on item two? If not, is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on item two on the agenda? Hearing now will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Don't move. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the request as presented with the green sheet on your consistency statement, or if there's any questions.
I make a motion to approve the request to rezone property from General Business GB to High Density Residential Limited Use HDRLU. The property is located west from the intersection of Witsit Street and Stokes Street on the north side of Stokes Street, addressed as 309 Stokes Street, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 133457. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the Comprehensive Plan, in that the future land use map in Section 4 land use of the Comprehensive Plan calls for this area to have traditional residential uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent residential uses. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the Comprehensive Plan calls for residential uses in the area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, signify by aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. That motion is approved. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you being here with us. Moving on to item three. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider a voluntary annexation petition to annex into the City of Burlington one parcel of land which is non-contiguous to current city limits, located on the east side of Birch Bridge Road, north of Brookhill Court, and south of Morgan Glen Drive, addressed as Zero Birch Bridge Road. The property is approximately 24 acres in size and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 127821. At this time, we'll recognize Jamie once again.
Okay, thank you so much. Included in your packet is an ordinance for your consideration. This is to annex one parcel of land totaling roughly 25 acres. This subject property was approved by the Technical Review Committee for a conservation subdivision in August of 2023. It was a residential development for single-family detached for 51 units. So as you may be aware, water and sewer currently exists along Birch Bridge. The applicant is seeking annexation for just this area. It is non-contiguous. The staff does recommend the annexation request. The applicant, as well as myself, are here to answer any questions that you might have. I did want to just pull up quickly the map that shows the conservation subdivision. Any highlight? I might have some questions that you might have. So this is the subdivision plan, it's 51 units. On the north side of the property, I don't know the map that shows this in color, but for time's sake, I'll just keep it on this. There is a 30-foot-wide sewer easement, followed by a 68-foot-wide power easement, and then along the perimeter of the development, kind of where my mouse is going, along all the outskirts of the development, there's a 40-foot additional, call it a conservation perimeter, which essentially is meant that the existing vegetation should stay.
Like Old City Park. Like Old City Park where Alamance Creek is.
It's not a type B, as I mentioned before. I think we call it a type I. So in addition to that, there is a 40%. 40% of the land is conservation, 12% is in open space conservation, and 8% is in active recreation. The minimum lot size for this type of development is 6,000 square feet. Most of the lots, I think, are closer to 7,000 square feet. So that just gives you an idea in case there were some questions relative to that. Any other things I can add at this point?
Any questions for Jamie on this request as project?
I'm just curious about, there are several subdivisions out in that same area. Are they all on city water and sewer?
There are utilities in those developments, however, Todd can correct me if I'm wrong, but those developments were not required to annex at the time that they were built. They do have utilities, though. And that's kind of the reason why, as I mentioned in the, in my presentation, that utilities already exist along Birch Bridge.
But this is a voluntary annexation request, though?
Correct.
That's the difference here?
Correct.
They're willing to come into the city?
Correct. They have petitions.
Right. Any other questions for Jamie? This is a public hearing on item number three, so at this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments on item three. Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak? Come forward. Please come, please come to the microphone, everybody can hear you. And for those that are online, please state your name and address for our city clerk.
I'm William Yarborough.
Thank you, Mr. Yarborough.
I live adjacent to where the project is happening at. And we have concerns. I mean, we didn't really know anything about this until we got the notice of this meeting in the mail, like, last Thursday or Friday. And at the, just looking at, I don't really, I'm not totally opposed to it. I have concerns. Part of being, the part that's known as the power line between us and them, we already have a lot of trouble with people trespassing on that on four-wheelers and motorcycles. And I'd actually had it come up there at 3:00 in the morning, shining lights in the house, turning around. And I'd like to see them do something with that, like make it part of the greenway that they're proposing, where no motorized vehicles are allowed on that. And also during the construction process, we're kind of in a bottom. I mean, I've had that creek back there halfway up my backyard. They need to be really careful and let us know that they're going to be really responsible if they flood the place. But you put the... But you put the wrong pile of dirt there, you could flood the back end of our neighborhood pretty easily. I've seen it happen. And that's my two personal concerns, but also concerned about the amount of traffic that's going to be. There's going to be like, what, 51 units there? Have any traffic studies been done? Has anybody looked at anything like that at all?
Jamie, would you, would you maybe give us a brief explanation of the TRC process?
So the first step if somebody was wanting to develop in the city is to request a pre-application conference meeting. That's free of charge. It's, it's advisory. We're providing staff, planning, transportation, engineering, NC DOT. Others are on the call. We're providing feedback, informal feedback on an application. So that would be the first step. And that's where we're giving advice in terms of, based on the number of units. NC DOT, city transportation department would help guide whether or not a TIA or traffic impact analysis is needed. So that is offered at that time. Once an application comes in, part of the completeness review for an application is whether or not, if it's required, a TIA is included. And if it's required and they haven't submitted it, we won't move it forward to the TRC.
It won't permit the project.
Correct. It's not deemed complete. So with the, with this type of application, considered a subdivision and a preliminary plat, conservation subdivision is a little bit different, but we would receive, you know, a map that shows all of the different streets, layout, as well as a landscape plan. So those are the things in addition to a TIA. In this situation, a TIA, TIA was not triggered, so it was not reviewed. In any event, staff will issue comments. Applicant will address it for consistency with our unified development ordinance on all different aspects. And it won't get approved until those items are addressed.
And consider,
I'm sorry.
Considering the, the excavation and the things that they have to do, there's proper erosion permitting, there's proper guidelines that have to be followed, and inspections will keep an eye on how that proceeds. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is not part of the TRC process. So that's through the engineering department and it's a separate permit process.
Once permitted.
For the infrastructure permits and the erosion control permits.
This is a, this public hearing is about the annexation.
That's correct.
Correct. Yeah.
Does that help answer your question? Okay.
Could you go back to the screen that showed the concept? So it looks like the only way out of that project is on to work with.
Yeah, there's, well, there's two different segments. So they have roughly 10 homes that would come off of Benchbrush, Benchbrush Lane, excuse me. And then the remaining would come off of Birch Bridge.
And what's your address, Mr. Yarborough?
What's your address?
1108 Maple Ridge. Well, is that a fair, well, actually, it is mine's.
In this vicinity up here?
You're right next to it. A little bit to your right. That's me.
Okay. So the request this evening is just to annex this property into the city limits. There's, there is an entirely different process for the approval of a project and things like that, which I wanted Jamie to kind of outline that a little bit because a lot of your concerns would be addressed during that process.
Do we know when that process is going to happen?
Well, so if plans or development applications are consistent with our unified development ordinance, there is no notice requirement. They go through an administrative process, which I've outlined. So it is up to the developer, really, if they want to do some outreach, have a neighborhood meeting. We often recommend that also during that pre-application conference meeting also. And that's when Amanda referred to that earlier, where staff would provide the list of 300 properties within 300 feet that would receive the letters as well. So for this type of application where it came in as conforming subdivision, no notice is required.
Yep. So the existing, the existing land use permissions allow this. However, staff will work to be sure that the developer meets all of our unified development ordinance requirements that will take into consideration some of your concerns in the process.
That's fine, but I'll take a hard look at taking them into the city until these things are addressed. I know this, that this is about to mide. Still, thank you for letting me express my concern.
Sure. Absolutely. Yep. Thank you for being here, Mr. Yarborough. We appreciate your comments.
Mayor, I would note that if they're annexed to the city, please.
That's what my next question was. If, if there's right-of-way intrusions, once it's annexed into the city, then we've got staff from the police department that would address those. Correct. Yep. Any other speakers on item number three? Any public comments? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward.
Shane and Ren in 1112 Maple Ridge Drive. Curtis is our neighbor. Our property is in the middle there. And some of the concerns we have, I know, don't affect the annexation. But as a realtor and educator in the area, there's a concern for traffic on Birch Bridge Road. And when you bring in construction and new development, it's going to tear up the roads even more. Also, like he was saying, security, we have trouble with people cutting through from the power lines in the woods. We just wondered if a traffic study had been conducted because to get out of Old Glencoe Road to go onto Birch Bridge Road, it's, it's a nightmare now. You add 50 more homes, that's at least 100 more cars coming down, up down that road. So that's a concern for all the neighbors. What is the price point of the homes? And when will they begin building? And which school will the students go to? Is there capacity at schools? So those are some concerns that we would appreciate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ren. We appreciate your comments and questions. Anyone else on this side of the room that would like to speak? If not, is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on item three?
Good evening again. Amanda Hodiern, 804 Green Valley Road, Suite 200 in Greensboro. I'm here tonight on behalf of the petitioner and the property owner, Birch Bridge Road Partners LLC. I have Mr. Juan Vigara here with me tonight, who's the principal of that entity. As, as has been noted, this is, of course, an annexation public hearing, so I want to speak to that. But I will note that we do appreciate this opportunity for dialogue. We're happy to, you know, meet our neighbors and continue those discussions. But, you know, I think the mayor and Ms. Lawson have done a good job of explaining that process. So unless asked, I'll probably just limit my comments to the annexation piece. So looking at that, of course, this area is within a part of the city's purview that can be served. And that's really the annexation analysis. Can the city adequately serve this with its police protection, its fire protection, its water and its sewer? So that's the analysis that is done when you submit an annexation request, and we have passed that analysis. There's also an analysis done on the economic impact and viability of this for the city. That's, that's in your staff report that everyone has and it's been shared with you and the public. And that analysis came out on the positive as well for this project. And I'll just say, you've, you've seen the, the plan that these developers put together and submitted and got approved. I'll note, as has been mentioned, they did not ask for anything different or to change what you as a city already established is appropriate in this location. They came in and they did that. They went through the rigorous TRC process. They're excited for the opportunity and they want to be a part of Burlington proper. They, they want to get to be a part of the city and they want to, they voluntarily submitted this application, of course, under state law. Now, that's the only way that we can annex, so we are happy to do that. It will not impact any of our neighbors. They don't have to annex. There's been talk about how previously you could get water and sewer without annexing. But now, of course, for a lot of reasons, cities don't do that anymore, most cities. And, and so we want to, we want to be a part of that utility system and we want to be a part of Burlington. So we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions for counsel of this request? Kathy, do you have any? All good. There's no other questions? Anyone else in this side of the room that would like to speak? Any public comments?
Motion to close public hearing.
We got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Any other questions for staff of the petitioner? If not, we'll entertain a motion on item three, voluntary annexation petition.
I have, Mayor. I think, you know, Mr. Yarborough asked a question about, I thought, just being rigorous somewhat. I think the questions he raised will be, for the most part, answered by the other process. You know, because the only question we have before us at this point is whether to annex or not annex the property. And really, you couldn't begin those processes until it's annexed. So having said that, I'll make a motion to approve the annexation.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you. Appreciate you folks being here. That closes our public hearings this evening. At this time, we'll move into new business. Item four, under new business, city council will consider approving budget amendment 2024-13 and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract between the city of Burlington and Bar Construction Incorporated, contingent upon final approvals of the city attorney and chief finance officer for the construction of 23 pickleball courts located at Burlington City Park and Fairchild Community Park. At this time, council recognizes assistant city manager Rachel Kelly. Good evening, Rachel.
Good evening. Thank you all. Here tonight to talk to you about the pickleball project and budget amendment request. Also in the audience tonight, additional questions, the rest of our project team, Nolan, Tony, Todd, Casey and Davis. Not with us tonight, but with the caper project manager on this project. As a reminder, at council's work session on June 5th, staff was directed to bid a 17-court pickleball complex located at City Park, six-court pickleball conversion at Fairchild Park, and then two small spectator shades and safety rails at Burlington Tennis Center. The consultant team within the staff worked estimated that construction at about $4 million. And that included a little over $3 million at the City Park Pickleball Complex, a little over $5 million on Fairchild Conversion, resurfacing the Fairchild parking lot, which is in need already and will be in greater need after the construction project. And then the spectator shady safety rails for almost $100,000 at the Burlington Tennis Center. So I wanted to point out a couple of highlights about what the components of the project would include. This pickleball complex at City Park is really turning out to be a first-class facility. It's 17 courts. You'll see that they are branded with city surface colors. Each of the courts is individually fenced and gated with four-foot fencing around each court. There's a covered championship court, during features, integrated lighting, sport court lighting specifically spec for pickleball, which can be controlled remotely by staff or can be controlled by players who want to come out and light up a bank of pickleball courts to play in the evenings during operating hours. Pedestrian lighting, spectator shade and furniture. Pickleball is a real social sport, so that gives an opportunity for people to have that social engagement as well as play. Restroom facility, which will be shared with the tennis center. Wind screens around the facility, sound screening near adjacent residential, Wi-Fi security cameras. Additional parking is part of the project on the aquatic centered lot to account for the increased use of that area. Pedestrian connectivity will go through the Crenault Center side, so you can also access that parking at the Crenault Center and Tennis Center. Enhanced landscaping signage. And also part of that complex is the small improvements to the Burlington Tennis Center. And as you can see, this fantastic rendering is pretty accurate as far as the details of what you'll see in the plans that were bid and what we hope this looks like when the construction is complete.
I know programming of, of this facility, something that we'll do when we get to the end of construction. But typically, how late would this facility be open?
Yeah, I can defer to Tony for the specifics, but I know that the pickleballers certainly do like to play in the evenings after work and into the night, dark hours.
Generally, our tennis court is already there right next to it. Has fairly late night play up to 11 o'clock.
Okay.
Lights go off in.
Okay. The reason I was asking that is because I don't know if anybody's been by the pickleball. There's just a couple of pickleball courts at Fairchild. And, and I was there two weeks ago at 10 o'clock and there was 60 people waiting, waiting their turn. It was incredible.
What time do, do your softball like to go out?
Depending on games, but if we have game scheduled at 9:00 o'clock, so that'd be 10, 11.
Actually, let me ask you, the, the one thing about pickleball that is loud.
Yes.
Because you've got the plastic balls and what? Being involved in that tennis center's construction, is there any consideration about trying to buffer some of that noise? Because I fear there's going to be conflict with the tennis because of that noise and pickleball.
Well, I agree that we definitely have heard about some of the pickleball noise complaints and the pickleball industry is pretty, being responsive to that with equipment, you know, new paddles, new balls, all that good stuff because they're thinking about it. But as far as this design, we focus the sound mitigation on the backside here. So it goes, if you can see my mouse, all the way around the back here.
That'd be closest to residential?
Really, really specifying the residential. Plus, there's that vegetative buffer that exists behind the apartment complex here. So that's where we focus the most, our concern regarding sound.
Could you do something similar back towards the tennis center?
I guess it's something we could certainly consider. It's currently not in the scope of the.
There is screen and last 15 minutes.
Yes.
That's intended to help mitigate some of the sound towards that direction. You're going to, you're going to definitely have some, some noise in there.
Would it?
Windscreen around the entire perimeter and then there's some landscape.
So with buffering and screening that's there now, would, would it make sense to get it approved, get it up, get it operational and then see if we've got a problem?
And you're talking about this in terms of its, of its actual construction. I'm not sure. That the present grade opposite of tennis center is probably six to eight feet higher grade. Is that incorrect, Nolan? So the tennis center is, would be like this, the pickleball will be here. You know, I, it's, it's a, and another thing, question I'm running up is parking. You know, tennis, I'm not saying the activity is going down, but a lot of the people who play pickleball and who play tennis, let's be honest. Would they share parking with the aquatics and the tennis and splash pads?
As well as Crenault.
And well as Crenault Center.
And sign it as well for pickleball on the Crenault side and.
Come back there and let, okay, okay, okay. Especially at night functions with the Crenault Center is very, there's very few. That would bet, that's a big lot.
And I think when it comes, we talked about it a little later for high intensity use. If you're going to run a tournament, Tony's staff's going to have to coordinate between tennis and aquatics to make sure, hey, we're not stacking all these tournaments on top of each other. And if we are, what's our shuttle situation looking like? So both of you.
We won't mix tournaments. If it was a tennis tournament, then we won't have a pickleball. And for something at the aquatic center, we won't have, have either, either. So we'll. So, we'll do that. To your question, Mr. Owen, about the rise to the tennis courts, I think is going to solve some of the sound problem, because it's a bank there that a lot of that sound's going to bounce off. And so, we could put up, we're putting up a special windscreen on the apartment side of that complex, so that that does buffer the sound. We could do the same thing over on the tennis court side if that was a problem.
If it's needed, yeah.
Yeah.
And I was going to ask you, this noise issue towards the apartments, people live there, obviously, that's a priority. So, whatever you're proposing, you would hope would be effective there, would it not be?
That's correct. And the parking, we're also adding some parking along the entrance to the Aquatics Center splash park and the tennis courts.
The indoor part, oh, not indoor, the covered area, I'm a little bit confused by this picture, is that, where would the splash pad be in this whole photo?
Splash pad is down below the cars.
Okay.
So, the covered area is back towards the apartments.
Is that correct?
Yes, the championship court, so that's a pickleball court with a larger bunker around it, and we'll also have bleachers, it's got integrated lighting, so if you're doing, you know, the last round of the tournament at night, you put it in there.
And it's also ADA accessible. We'll fear pickleball could be played on that court.
Larger radius.
My question, yeah. Well, let me ask you this. Why would we be in the back, back there? Wouldn't that make more sense to be back up towards the front?
We've gone through several iterations of how to maximize the number of pickleball courts in this footprint. What we've heard from the community is as more pickleball is their number one priority. So, yeah, there was, Todd drew many considerations of how to get the most out of this, so that did work best.
Yeah.
And it's closer to the restroom building, so that made some sense too, to have your crowds at the end of the tournament.
And the restroom facilities, you restroom facility's being built?
Yes, that's over here to the right.
Hard to see off of that picture, but there is a restroom facility there, and that will help the tennis courts too, because there's a walkway down to right two there.
That'll include a men's, women's, family facility and a small storage area.
That covered court backs up to the tennis backboard. Harold, if you're familiar where that is?
Yes, yeah. So, when would the project start?
The project will start, obviously, once we abort the bid and the contracts are complete. They could start as soon as mid-December. We're looking at a summer 2024 completion. Got more to walk through if y'all'd like me to?
Absolutely.
The rendering is fantastic, so I wanted to spend a minute on that, but the pickleball complex at City Park, we're really designed to meet the growing demand of pickleball. You guys have seen it, it's the fastest growing sport and has been for many years in the United States. We did meet with a local group of pickleball players, really ranging in demographics. I think Tony did a great job of bringing them together to talk about their priorities. Again, we heard more courts matters more than anything else. We heard that they were like wind screens, individual court fencing, lighting both pedestrian and for players. So, we did try to really incorporate all that feedback. We've also designed this to be an outstanding location to host tournaments. As you well know, we're really well positioned in the state and along 4085 to be a place where people come for sports tourism. And this facility is also slated to be one of the largest publicly run facilities in state at this point. So, it is a really attractive place for us to host some tournaments and get some play on, you know, weekends when we're serving our local community during the week. So, we will be embarking on a market analysis, economic impact study to create a pro forma on how to really optimize the space. Again, part of this bid is the Fairchild conversion, so that's resurfacing one tennis court, resurfacing two tennis courts and leaving one into six pickleball courts. That would include new perimeter fencing around that whole complex. Again, the four-foot individual fences and gates, upgraded lighting at that whole facility, spectator seating and shade, sidewalk, and that parking lot resurfacing that we mentioned. So, that's the.
Will we start both of the projects simultaneous?
My understanding is that we're going to sort of leave it to the construction company to decide what's most advantageous, but we have approved them to do both simultaneously.
Because I think from a, just from the simple fact that we already have them playing out there now, if we could minimize the downtime and accelerate that piece.
How's that a conversation?
And it needs some attention, the whole, that whole facility does. Yeah, and that area with the Fairchild, what we've done at the center, and then with the baseball comp, with the facility in Whitefield, and then the, this complex will make a substantial difference in Fairchild Park coming off of Grand Updell Road.
It's going to look good. So, go ahead.
We're already getting questions about having some courts available while the construction's going on, so we'll work on that. We can do indoor courts at the Fairchild Community Center. We can have four courts at one time in there. We've got pickleball markings on the Davidson Park tennis courts, so they can play there too, and then we'll try to do the best we can to make sure they're not without a court while the construction's going on.
How much participation do you have at Fairchild inside?
There's some senior groups that play there during the weekdays, at least two or three times a week. It's pretty good, too.
That's something that's pretty prominent across the state and recreation centers.
But that's the only place in Burlington that you can play inside, is that correct?
It's the only place I know of inside.
And as far as recreation in the city, within the city, recreation?
Yes. Okay.
So, down to the brass tacks, I bet we had four bids come in for this project. Our construction company was the little bid, their base bid, just a bit over $4 million. You can see the breakdown below, but the budget amendment before you is for 4.6, and that covers the pickleball complex, the tennis center additions, the Fairchild conversion, the Fairchild parking lot resurfacing, and then the owner provided equipment and project contingency that goes into both of those projects. As I mentioned before, summer 2024 is the goal for project completion. And staff's request tonight is for council to consider awarding the bid and our cooperation and city manager to execute that contract after.
Peggy Craig, would the premise be to install financing on this?
Fund balance. Yes, sir.
Why give the details on this for us?
We'll hire at least a part-time staff person that's knowledgeable in pickleball instruction, how to conduct local league play, ladder play, elimination play, whatever, and do clinics, so that we can help teach people to play that are interested in the game and also have some competition. And I will say, the National Pickleball Association, we have a regional directors contacting me. I didn't contact them, and they said, if you build this complex, we will bring tournaments here. So, we're already guaranteed of that.
I'm hoping that pro forma also provides some guidance to Tony and I about really how much staff time it's going to take for us to get what we want out of the facility and the highest investments.
We're going to make a presentation to the TDA and ask for some funding to help with the pro forma on it as well.
And we can also do a reimbursement resolution.
After the fact.
I can do reimbursement resolution next week, and then any costs we incur, we do and install the financing next year with other things, or if we can add that.
Perfect. That's where I was going with that. Harold got on operations before I got my finances lined up. Spoken like a true city manager. It's amazing what the growth of this sport, it's probably the fastest individual-growing sport now that I think in the United States in the last.
Five years in a row.
I just read an interesting article about the impact on public health pickleball has had. Strong.
Yep. There's, it started out with a lot of seniors playing. It's getting younger people now, but there's a lot of seniors that take part in pickleball.
18 to 34 is actually the most popular age group of pickleball at this point.
There's a lot of tennis players who's aged, you know, who gets into this, because it's not quite so much running.
Know some of those. I believe Mr. Wall knows somebody, too.
Not Mr. Wall, by the way.
No, heck no.
No.
Thank you.
It's a tennis player that was excellent, excellent in his household. Really top-notch tennis player.
So, what do we need in our? Anything else, Rachel? Is that everything?
Everything for me, if you have any more questions.
Okay. Any other questions for staff on this? If not, we'll entertain a motion. I have a motion to approve the budget amendment 2024-13, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract between the City of Burlington and Bar Construction Company for this project. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Rachel, and Peggy Craig, and everybody's staff that's, I know a lot of people. Todd, you've worked on this. That's beautiful. I hope we can pull it off just like that. We'd like to get it open for Memorial Day, just keep that in mind. Is that like the carousel? Nolan, is that like?
I think Nolan's involved in this, really.
It could be Easter, too, you know, maybe move it up even further. I'm good with Memorial Day. I don't want to rush it. Want to inform the motion? No, well, we want to let Nolan stew on that for a little bit. At this time, we'll enter the public comments, and I think, there are no public comments, is that right? No public comments, so we'll move right into council comments. Couple of things. One, it is very nice to see Council Member-elect Dwan Bigelow with us this evening, so thanks for being here. It's good to see you. Another item is, we had our annual Chamber of Commerce retreat, this is the week before last, or last week, and a lot of our staff attended. Craig was there, Peter was there, Aaron was there, Casey was there. We had a big, big crowd representing the city and a very good, very good event, well-attended, and a lot of informative and interesting topics. Upcoming events, I know we've got Saturday, the 25th, we have our Christmas tree lighting that's from 4:00 to 6:00, isn't that right?
Yes.
Downtown. And also, as recognized in the proclamation, it is Small Business Saturday. So, shop small, that's important. And Aaron, thank you for your work with the Downtown Corporation and what you guys are doing to help those small businesses. And I also want to just tell everybody, thank you. I had to miss a couple of meetings. I had an injury, and then I came down with COVID, so I apologize I was not here. And I know it puts a burden even on the petitioner sometimes. We had a couple of continuances because of that. So, I don't, absences, I don't like, but sometimes you can't handle them. You can't help it. You've just got to deal with it. I will tell you an interesting story. I tore a muscle in my hip, and my doctor said, you need to slow down your activity. Maybe you're a little too active. I said, just walking down steps count, because that's how it happened. So, no pickleball, I'm not doing pickleball. But thanks, everyone, for filling in, for Harold, for filling in during that. Harold, I appreciate it.
Harold did a great job all the way, Mayor.
Let me mention one thing, David, about small business. A small business opened downtown yesterday. It's called The Bound Shop. It's the, it goes back to some of us who remember this, turntables, amplification, and big speakers, but it has an unbelievable selection of older albums. And you'd be shocked, and some people were there yesterday, the interest that already that has created with Elon students, you know, think about this for a minute, who aren't during the days of turntables. Didn't know what it was. That's right. But it is probably the most purest music that's still out there. And gentlemen and wife who opened this up has done a really nice job with it, and it's right there on Main Street. Certainly, it's something, if you're uptown, you'll go out and visit it, it's pretty cool.
Elon history class, if you see him, I think.
It's pretty interesting. Any other council comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I hate the media was not here last night. I thought it was a great presentation on Western Electric. That information needs to get out and about the community. Lot of work to be done, but we're not standing still waiting. We've shown a lot of patience, and the community has shown a lot of patience, but it's time to start moving forward, and hopefully, we're moving in the right direction. So, thank you for your hard work in bringing some people together to at least have conversations. Good.
Well, we talked about it. Craig and I actually talked today a little bit about this position statement that we want to put together for the purpose of keeping respectful pressure on the U.S. Army to do what they should be doing based on the criteria that we think is required for that site. But it is complicated. It's, and sometimes, the more you get involved in, the more complicated it becomes, as everybody is acutely aware of. Morgan, I do think it would be good, as we're starting to now get things a little more, just enough information out there that we can see kind of where it's heading, if we could create an informational section somewhere on the website dedicated to that, that we could start. How does council feel about that? Because the public has no means for accessing this knowledge, other than maybe some commentary that they get out in the community that isn't always accurate. And if we could create a facts page that just really shows some timelines, what we've done, what some of the hurdles are, and I'm sure there's enough staff and myself and other council members that could get involved in shaping what that should look like, just so we could direct the community to go there to get the real story.
Absolutely.
Could you do that?
That's a good idea. Just keep it updated periodically and as things develop, you know, with the DOD in particular, you know, because that's not, that's not an easy undertaking, as you know, dealing with a lot of expense. As we hear things, we put it, you know, disseminate that information. I think, I think the public would really appreciate it, so I'm glad you suggested that.
I think, you know, the one thing I'll tell you about this endeavor is, every time you think you've got a path, there's five roadblocks, and you have to pick another path and another path. So, we've done that enough that we've now kind of figured out what direction we need to be going. It then now becomes a timeline and a depth. And then, obviously, we've got private ownership, that's an entirely different conversation.
And Mr. Mayor, I just got a text that we do have a section of that on our website now, but it probably just needs to be updated. And as we talked about, we're working on a quote-unquote position paper for the city that we need to update, and also with the SM and E stuff that we got last night as well.
Yeah. So, I just think that's important. We can kind of use that portal to be our one voice, to be sure that the public understands the facts.
We just need to promote it probably a little bit more. I was even unaware we didn't, or we didn't have that.
Okay, good. Any other council comments? Not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Remove.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.